You ready, Dan? All right, I just want to thank everyone of y'all for coming. And we're gonna open up this council meeting and the public works all at the same time. And right now, I'm all I can call roll.
Bishop, here. Patterson, Barron.
Here.
Martin, Friar.
Here.
We have four of them.
I believe two of my council members are off on spring break, so hopefully they'll be back at the next meeting. All right, we'd like to stand for facts, please. Crakey, would you like to lead us in the facts, please?
Sure, sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Earl, would you like to say grace?
For those gracious heaven and the Father, we're so thankful for the need blessings you've bestowed on each one of us. Lord, I pray for our council, give them wisdom on everything that they undertake. We ask that you continue to bless this community, and we pray above all else that we always do your will, for in your name we pray, amen.
All right, approval of consent agenda. I don't see. Anybody like to remove anything off consent agenda? All right, I entertain the motion that we accept the consent agenda as written.
So moved.
A second.
Bishop, yes. Barron.
Yes.
Friar.
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna skip all the way down there to just comments and from the citizens, and I'm gonna open this up to our city attorney, who's got a few things he'd like to say, then he'll get it back to me.
This is somewhat be a repeat of what discussion we had regarding the turnpike a couple of months ago, but there's two things that I can state with absolute assurance about the turnpike project, and that is that the city of Harrah did not have a part in instigating or starting the turnpike project, and we don't have a role in stopping it. That was my advice to this council early, it's been confirmed in meetings with the turnpike authority, that they appreciate assistance and comment from Harrah, but that this project's going ahead regardless of any action that this board takes. And by statute, this board doesn't have any authority to take any action to stop. Just like each and every one of you, the council persons and the staff, they can express their personal opinion about the turnpike, but no action that this board takes is going to affect whether or not there's gonna be a turnpike. The turnpike authority early on did invite some input from this council regarding properties, both public and private, that would have the greatest impact if the route went through, such as schools and cemeteries and large subdivisions. So they were seeking information, not permission and not opinion. So that has occurred. The other thing I can assure you absolutely is that if you're a property owner whose property is affected by the final route of the turnpike, that you are by statute assured that you will be paid market value for the highest and best use of your property. The state is required to do that. For example, if you have a piece of property that someone is occupying, a home, but that property's highest and best use would be as a commercial property, then you're entitled to have your property appraised as a commercial property or at its highest and best use and to be paid accordingly. If you have a tract that only a portion of the property is taken, but that taking of that portion, they have to pay you full market value at highest and best use for the part they take. But in addition to that, if the taking of a part of your property causes the value of the remainder that they didn't take to go down in value, there's a legal concept called damage to the remainder. So the state, you have to prove that damage issue in court or by negotiated settlement, but a property owner is absolutely entitled to be paid for the value of what's taken and the value of what's not taken if it's a damage benefit. The best example I can give of that is one that was used in a trial court one day, and that is that the state was, the HOG department was doing a condemnation because they were expanding a highway. And their theory was that they should only have to pay for that part of the property they actually took, they shouldn't have to pay for any part of the remainder. So the exhibit we used in the trial was to buy a dress at a thrift shop, and we stood in front of the jury and we said, "The city only wants to pay for that portion of this dress that they're gonna take." So we took a pair of scissors, cut a piece off the bottom, and said, "Okay, this piece we just cut off represents the property that the state's gonna take." The state would have you to believe that they only took a piece off the bottom, they shouldn't pay anything for what's left, and that they didn't damage what's left. Well, obviously, that's kind of silly little example proves that it's possible to take only a portion of a property owner's property but do damage to what was not taken. But by statute, you're absolutely entitled to be paid for that if you're one of the persons whose property they take, either in part or in whole. I've heard the commitment from this council and every member here that even though we can't do anything to stop the turnpike, we can react to whatever route is ultimately taken and try to turn it into the best advantage to the city of Harrah and its citizens that can possibly result from a project once it's completed. I don't know what form that will take, and nobody knows the future for sure, but that is Harrah's position, and that's the only position Harrah can take, is to try to make the best of what happens.
Mayor. And let me tell you, his background with these road projects and stuff is great because he's dealt with a lot of them. He's just not sitting up here as a lawyer, you know how lawyers are, they yadda yadda, but he's dealt with this. I mean, this is one of his cups of tea that he's talking about.
I've represented public bodies that were doing condemnations, much like the turnpike authority will do, and I've also represented a lot of people who were defending for property taken and trying to get the best value for property owners. So I have some experience in that, and I think I understand the process, but I do know that the statute requires that landowners be treated as fair as possible.
All right, now I'm gonna hold.
Can we get Q and A?
Yeah.
Do we get a chance to ask some questions?
Hang on. As y'all know, this council meeting is a business meeting for the city of Harrah. It's not a meeting for the turnpike authority or anything else. But I'm gonna take it upon myself, I will be the responsibility person here, and I'm gonna let five of you talk for three minutes. Now, we cannot take no action, we can't comment on anything that you say. We understand? But we will listen to you. Believe you me, we will listen. We understand where a lot of these come from. I've got a dog in this hunt, just like y'all do. But right now, I wanna know how many veterans we have out here? First of all, thank you for your service. Now, of all you veterans, which one, how many of y'all wanna say something? Okay, sir, you step right on up here, quote your name.
My name is Larry McClean. I live at 23rd and Peabody Road. Before today, I didn't know who was on the council. Lo and behold, when I looked it up, somebody come up named Sammy Martin, known him for forty years, worked with him at Tinker. I was sickened to my stomach to know that he agreed and wanted this, as all of you supposedly asked for it, wanted between XXX and Peabody Road, was loving it, begging them for it. Supposed amendment, everybody voted on it, got it in writing out the truck. I didn't bring it in, didn't think I needed to. I didn't know there was gonna be somebody saying that they didn't want it. I thought all of y'all wanted it. Anyhow, from what I knew then, it was that you all had given your blessing to build a turnpike through Harrah. How could anyone make a decision of that magnitude without the people's input? All of you agreed that people, homes and land were not as important as a slab of concrete. I'm gonna give credit to Sammy. I wished he was here. Sammy was a firefighter. For over thirty years at Tinker, I worked with him, not as a firefighter, but in civil engineering, I worked with him. They run into buildings that are burning, they save homes and lives. Without the decis- with the decision all of you made, you will destroy more homes and lives than any fire or tornado that has ever hit Harrah in history. Would like to know if any of your homes are in the path.
No.
I would bet they are not. You have failed the people of Harrah. When you travel around Harrah, please pay attention to the faces of the people you caused to lose their homes, or maybe worse, the ones that will be forced to live next to the big cash cow of your turnpike. The turnpike is a bypass, not an invitation to stop and shop at Harrah. There's a call to boycott Harrah and Old Germany Restaurant.
Yeah.
I'm just one person. However, I will not be spending one dime of my money on any business that supports the turnpike. I'm sorry. The OTA must have made you an offer you could not refuse.
Yeah.
Hope you sleep well at night. Not really.
Thanks. Any more veterans?
My name is Lois Walters, and I live over in Ranford, Edition.
Your name, Todd, now?
Lois Walters. We moved to Harrah in 1977 because my husband, being a disabled American, service-connected veteran, he could not tolerate the noise, the traffic, everything that was going on in Midwest City where we live. We moved out here for peace and quiet. In our addition along, we have three hundred percent disabled vets, we have one active military person, we have widows of disabled vets. We're all retirement age or disabled. The turnpike, if the route is going now, it's gonna be a half a mile from our house. What's it gonna do to our well water? These veterans already have enough health issues. This well water being polluted by the runoff, what's that gonna do to our well water? We don't want city water, we like our well water, you know? And that's our biggest concern, the health of these veterans that already have health issues. And in reply to your comment that Harrah didn't have anything to do with this, I saw a letter from the city manager wanting the turnpike to come through Harrah as much as possible and with as many exits as possible.
Correct.
Yeah.
How can you justify having an exit, three, four, or five exits in a twenty-month-long stretch? And have you ever been on the turnpike somewhere where you stopped to get off in some product town to go shopping? Look what happened in Stroud. It's a ghost town now, because nobody stops there.
Brewster, too.
They stop at the McDonald's to get gas and food, and then they go on to where they're going. Same thing's gonna happen here. We're not gonna get anything out here. We haven't had anything out here this long, we're not gonna get anything because the turnpike's gonna.
Good job.
Patty.
So you were Mr. McClean?
That's correct.
Okay. And Ms. Walters, Frau Kristi Wren?
Name your name.
My name is Kristi Wren, and this is my first time to address the council, so thank you for this opportunity. Well, I've had a really bad day today. Today I found out that due to budget cuts, I will lose my job on April fifteenth. I can either choose a voluntary buyout or try to stay a little bit longer until a reduction force makes me hit the road for good. But I have a choice. Unlike so many in the direct path of this turnpike alignment, they will be forced from their homes, and they have no one to turn to. This thing comes along and will shatter so many people's dreams and will kill a way of life that has been in this state long before it became a state. Now, the corporate and political power grabbers who are pushing this kind of crap down on us are banking on this, thinking it's a done deal. They're banking on this, thinking we can't beat it, and they're thinking we are hopeless and powerless. But folks, stay involved. Why do you think there are "We Heart Turnpike" signs and other crazy things being said? They're said to install fear and submission. We are stronger than you think. There are cracks. You do not know what I know. And I did bring a copy of the letter and the council minutes, if anybody would like to see that, I have it with me. I'd like to quote former President Clinton, who said, "There's nothing wrong with America that what's right with America can't fix. Stay together and fight." And this is a constitutional republic, and in this republic, there has not ever been no law ever passed that cannot be repealed, and there is no politician that can't be fired by the people. I know that I can do something, my vote can help with this petition recall. I can help give the control and the leadership and the vision back to the people.
All right. My name is Joe Crakey. If you're here with the council, those who I am, I'm here all the time, I've been coming for five years. I was here when they passed your resolution back in December, and I believe it stated, "The city of Harrah is excited about the prospect of the turnpike being in our city limits." Tom, do these people look excited to you?
Disappointed.
Was anyone, was anyone here that night that they all passed the resolution, besides me? No. I'm gonna have to point you two out. I spoke with you in private, I also spoke with Mr. Martin in private. You know, you tell me you're against it, Mr. Martin comes out today, tells me he's against it. Mr. Barron, you admitted to me there was no discussion that night about the resolution or about anything on the turnpike. Now, I understand you guys can't stop the turnpike, I got it. Ask Earl, I've been up here, I bet I've talked to him ten times, phone, in his office, I sat in there for thirty minutes yesterday, we had a good talk. The thing you guys are missing is you support these citizens. Well, you're supposed to support these citizens.
Represent.
Represent.
Where is the support? You know, Earl tells me he's had some phone calls, well, these people want the turnpike.
No, we don't.
Where are they? I don't see them. I don't see them. Listen, I understand you guys are up here to do best for the city, and once that turnpike and ground may be broken, then it's time to switch gears, then we gotta do best for the citizens, or for the city. But it would be nice, it'd be wonderful to be backed up by the citizens, by the city. You know, you guys, I come and see you guys vote all the time, and everything you do, and you know, it's a lot of yeses to me all the time, you know? Kim, you may have property involved in this and a family, and for you to sit and vote yes on the resolution, I mean, I can't imagine what your family thinks, you know? I don't know. One note would be great. I'd love to sit up here and see dissent from you guys. I'd love to see discussion. You admitted to me there was no discussion that night, you know? That's the sad part. Is it sad that I may lose my eighty acres down here? Sure. Is it sad that these people may lose their land, this guy may have to stare out at that thing every day? The saddest part is the citizens lost control. I'm not sure why we're here, I'm not sure that you guys will listen, I'm not sure that you'll know anything, but I sure would like to see something. I've asked you, you, and Mr. Martin to put something on the agenda, so maybe we can send OTA a new letter saying, "Well, you know what? Maybe we jump the gun. The citizens of Harrah have come out, the citizens of Harrah have spoken, the citizens of Harrah don't want the turnpike. Give it to Randy Ross if he wants it."
Yeah.
Use 102, it's a piece of junk, fix it. Use 177, it's nice as it gets. Not only am I against it, I'm biased, it's coming through my land now, but let's look at it from a monetary standard. Do you guys know how far 177 is from the proposed turnpike route? It's ten and three-quarters miles, okay? Going seventy miles an hour, Tom, maybe you speed, maybe you do seventy-five, you may get there a little faster. Do you know how far it is from I-44 to I-40? It's twenty-two and a half miles. So we're gonna spend three-hundred million dollars to go twenty-one miles. It's not even about taking the land, I mean, there's so much more to it that I'm afraid we're not seeing. I spent thirty minutes talking with Representative Moore before I got here, was at the state yesterday, I talked to Senator Sharp. Representative Moore seemed to be more helpful, Senator Sharp said, "Take the Mary Fallon or take it to your city." Well, I'm here. I'm always here, but I'm here again. I'd love to see something on the next agenda about it. I invited Representative Moore to the next meeting if we get something on the agenda about it. He offered with me to come to negotiations. I'll be here again next month, just like I always am, maybe I'll be sitting up here. We'll see. Thank you.
This will be our last speaker.
This is the first time I've ever been to one of the, my only question is, you said you can't do anything.
Mayor, sir.
But have you at least?
They can't answer questions.
Can you at least write a letter that says that you've changed your mind, that the citizens are not for it? That's all I'm asking. And if you can't change it, then you can't change it, but at least show that you're trying.
Earl, you've had a spoken, you sit on the economic council, are you gonna give any word? You voted for it, Earl.
I want to, right now, I would like, are you done, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No guts.
Right now, I would like to thank everyone of y'all that came, and so.
Mr. Mayor, I hope you're gonna be held accountable for the environmental damage. You have no fire hydrants, if the fire starts and you only have pumpers. I shall certainly get out of it.
This is my meeting.
I understand that.
Ma'am.
I'll be.
One more word.
I'll be.
You know, so. Right now, we're gonna continue with our council meeting, and like I said, I think everyone of y'all is coming, and so. Out of May, Treasury report. Where is it?
There's always a juicy tidbit later. There's always a juicy tidbit later.
We're hoping you'll read.
That's when Randy Ross made his little comments. It was after the meeting.
Sustained this month, fell below budget for the first time in a while. However, as this person pointed out, this is. Well, this is actually January's money that we're getting, just not being.
Earl, disappointed in you, buddy?
Nobody is spending money after Christmas, and I think there's a lot of it, because every year for the last twelve years, it's been one of our lower ones.
Yeah, I'll wait.
But I think, I'm concerned about where we're gonna go from here. I think we'll come out okay this budget year.
Danny, shut them two doors right there. Thank you, Danny.
Anyway, just with everything going on at state level and trickling down, I don't think we're gonna spend much time. I think we're gonna be fine. We're still, this budget year overall, we're up one-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand. But if our numbers, one-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, if our numbers continue to go down, I feel like next budget year could be a tough year, so we need to play with you. And I gave you the numbers on the three accounts that are operating accounts on Sustained, all of them on Sustained, on the bank statements.
Anybody have any questions? All right, entertain a motion till we accept the budget report, Treasury report.
Uh, maybe we accept the budget, Treasury report is presented.
Barron?
Yes.
Bishop? Friar?
Yes. Accept resignation of Sammy Martin on Eastern Oklahoma County Board, and I think he turned his resignation in, and Dick Patterson asked me to appoint, if you're able to appoint him to that seat, and so, took the grab.
Is he, is he able to make, when is those meetings, during the day, aren't they?
They are Wednesday morning at eight. One Wednesday morning, not, or the first Wednesday?
So make the motion to accept Dick Patterson as the.
Please, Dick, she accepts a resignation of Sammy and then.
Okay.
And then appoint Dick on the next item.
Entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Sammy Martin.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, second name.
Bishop, yes. Barron?
Sure.
Friar?
Yes.
Michelle Carey.
And then? Item D. Item D, yeah.
Dick done any problem with having to order that?
No.
You get it if you choose to appoint a representative and an alternate, so that if it becomes a problem, somebody else will do it.
You want to be the alternate?
I can be the alternate if y'all want me to be the alternate, but I move that we make Dick our representative to county board, for instance, if we need him.
And Tom Barron the alternate.
Since you guys don't have my, could you say that name a little louder? Who are you nominating?
Why, you put this on television?
I don't know, probably, probably just the regular, isn't that me?
So. Who?
Dick Patterson.
Dick Patterson.
Yes, he's a member of the council. It has to be a council.
Hey, Dick. And then Tom, you gonna be the alternate?
I don't mind being the alternate, I feel enjoyed.
All right. Take a second on that.
Barron?
Yes.
Bishop, yes. Friar?
Yes.
Michelle Carey.
Item B, approve the purchase of a police car. Girls better be using your hat on this.
Gary's, has the presentation, he's been giving some quotes, and he is here to do you know what he's looking at.
Yeah, you know, it's that time of year again to try to get another police car, so this year is gonna be a little bit more challenging than it has been in the past due to the increase in the price of the vehicles and the equipment. I do believe I can do it, but I don't have, I've got one quote here on a Caprice, a 2016 Caprice, and our last year, and the last year's prices on the equipment. What I'll have to do is a little bit of magic with the equipment to.
How far y'all, how far is the difference between?
Well, the total.
What kind of magic you gonna, how much of this magic you gonna?
Well, the total on the equipment that we've got so far is twenty-four, four-seventy-four. But that includes an eighty-eight-hundred-dollar L3 mobile vision flashback car video system. There are some cheaper ones on the market that we've been looking at, and I think we can save some of that money off there. The L3 mobile is a top of the line, that's what we put in the last two or three cars. But, you know, like I said, I can save some money there, and I can save some money on the, the, what was it? Oh, the laptop. We've got, we've got, what we got last time was twenty-four-hundred dollars with the console, laptop and all that stuff, and I think I can, with the refurbished ones we've been getting for the tough looks, you know, we could cut that in more than half, so.
So how much money do you think is gonna be shortfalling on this?
Well, if I went with, if I went with the current prices, I mean, like I said, we're looking at twenty-seven, two-fifty-six on just the car, for every, and twenty-four, four-seventy-four on the, at eighty-four on the equipment, so, you know, we'd be, could be a couple, a few thousand dollars over our fifty-thousand-dollar budget that we've adjusted for.
So, all right, we buy a new car, I understand, since we've been buying a new police car every year or two, so we're going to put this old police car into surplus, right?
Right, right, one of our oldest units will be doing.
So what are we doing with all this?
So what are we doing with all the surplus stuff that we have, that we've had over the years? I know that we gave McLeod a couple of cars.
We have, yeah, we donated some of our vehicles to McLeod, you know, in their time of need, and it's worked well for them.
So what do you think, if we surplus this, these police cars that you're putting out of service, how much do we get for them, police cars?
Truthfully, Mayor, a used police car with the, because we, we don't, we don't have a turnaround program like a lot of larger departments, we pretty much drive the wheels off them before we surplus them, and the average auction or however we end up surplusing and selling that vehicle, I've seen it go as low as $500, so...
So how many do you have to surplus?
I've got one or two that I can surplus.
So that's a thousand closer than we are than you were. That's my suggestion, that we start looking at the surplus and start selling some of it, or auctioning it off, or putting it up for sale to, to get it, get rid of it.
And we can do that.
Is there any equipment off, any of the old ones that we could reuse, lights and radios, anything to offset the cost of the new equipment?
Some of the, some of the cars that we're gonna be downing are, the equipment in them are, like I said, we drive the wheels off them, and they're, they're old equipment, so, could we maybe save a few bucks doing it? Yes, you know, we could, but like I said, radios, electronic equipment, lighting, anything else, the use that they, that they've already used, I guess, it's, it's gonna be kind of, you know, you get what, you know, the used pri- I mean, it's...
Well, why don't we sit down, and Earl will sit down, and you and Gary sit down, and you'll look at, see where we can come up with that extra money, the helping, I know that your budget's $50,000, right?
Yeah, that's what we budgeted last year.
So, maybe we can surplus some stuff back, so.
It's about $57,000 or something, you know? Can we look for donations from citizens?
We can.
Kim, do you have any? Tom?
No, I know we budgeted for it, that was a little bit more than you was hoping to get for, but you'll probably get pretty close to that, but...
We'll be close. I might say that.
If you're able to get a bargain or...
I really believe that I can work some of this equipment around and get some, you know, seek out some of my cheaper vendors and maybe get within, stay within our $50,000.
Well, as far as the $50,000 we budgeted, I think if they can get into that, I think we're an improvement by within the budget.
Well, yeah, but he, he's gonna be over his budget, 'cause everything went up this year.
Well, like, like I said, I believe, I believe I can work some magic and make it happen. I can, if you'll approve the $50,000, I can, I can, I can work enough, I believe I can stay within that $50,000.
Awesome.
I think we're going in.
I entertain a motion that we approve the...
Why move that we go ahead and approve a purchase of a police car within the budget that we approved for the replacement this year, which was $50,000?
Baron?
Yes.
Bishop, yes. Friar?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay.